Okay, recording has started.
Okay, it is now 9:00 AM Wednesday, September 30th, 2020. And we are on the record for the public hearing regarding proposed rule docket 20-0000-2000F. Good morning, my name is Eric Wilson, Public Trust and the Resource Protection and Assistance Bureau Chief for the Idaho Department of Lands. Thank you all for attending today. The most important part of this hearing is gathering testimony from the participants. To do that in an orderly fashion with participants in person, through Zoom and via phone, we need to do some housekeeping first. For those on Zoom and on the phone, please mute your screen or phone until you are ready to talk, and then re-mute when you are done. This reduces feedback and distracting background noises, this hearing is being recorded. For those attending in person, please keep your mask on and respect social distancing while in the building. If you are unable to do that, you will be asked to leave and join via phone or Zoom. Please make sure you have signed in and indicated which sets of rules you wish to provide testimony on. For those on Zoom, Mick Thomas, Division Administrator for Mining, Public Trust and Oil and Gas, will be using the chat feature to help gather the names of those participants and which rules they wish to provide testimony on. The chat function is on the bottom bar of your Zoom screen. For those on the phone only, I will ask each of you to clearly state your name and identify which set of rules you wish to provide testimony on. We're not taking testimony yet, but we'll be going through each set of rules in turn for testimony on those rules. So do we have anyone on the phone?
Eric, if you don't mind, I'm gonna hop in real quick and do a little bit of housekeeping on my end. Thank you for the introduction again, my name is Mick Thomas, Division Administrator over Minerals, Public Trust, Oil and Gas. Eric is onsite today and he's the, he'll be leading this discussion. If you are on Zoom, please use the chat function, it's a little icon at the bottom, it says chat, and enter your name, type it in and send it to the group. You can say reply all and enter your name in there, so we have it. If you don't put your name in via chat or tell us verbally now, or sign the sign-in sheet onsite with Eric, you won't be recorded as being a part of this hearing or a public comment period, excuse me. And something else that Eric said as a courtesy, as far as muting goes, obviously this doesn't apply to the folks in the room, but if there is background noise, we will ask you to mute. If it doesn't happen, we will mute you proactively. And if it continued, we would have the discretion to disconnect you remotely. Again, that's, that's worst case scenario, but it's very important, especially the folks on the phone and Zoom, well, yeah, to, to please mute whenever possible because of the echo and the background noise. So thanks a ton. John, I think, I see you just signed in, thank you very much. And I'll, I'll repeat what Eric said, is there anyone on the phone or who would like to sign in orally right now, other than, you know, if not, you could, you could use the chat function, but right now, is there anyone who'd like to sign in orally by stating and spelling your name? Okay, fine, I appreciate that, and Eric, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you for the, thank you for the flexibility to let me say some words.
Alright, thanks Mick. Okay, well, thank you all for your patience as we completed the roll call of participants. Before we start the hearing, I want to give a general background for this hearing. This rule docket is for all fee rules administered by the Idaho Department of Lands. The 2020 legislature did not pass a concurrent resolution to approve all fee rules through the next legislative session. As a result, all fee rules expired at the end of the 2020 legislative session. State Board of Land Commissioners or the Gas Conservation Commission and Idaho Board of Scaling Practices approved temporary rules to fill in the gap between the end of the 2020 legislative session and the end of the 2021 legislative session. This rule docket seeks to bring set of pending rules before the 2021 legislature for their review and approval as permanent rules. These rules are largely the same as the current temporary rules with one exception, IDAPA 20.03.02, the rules governing mine line reclamation. House Bill 141 passed during the 2019 legislative session made substantial modifications to Title 47, Chapter 15 Idaho Code. The changes to the Mine Line Reclamation Act required a temporary rule to be approved before August 1, 2019. The department met this deadline, but further negotiations were needed to replace the temporary rule with a pending rule to be reviewed by the legislature. Those negotiations were conducted August through November 2019 under docket number 20-02, excuse me, docket number 20-0302-1901. And from May through August 2020, under docket number 20-0302-2001. Compliance with executive orders 2019-02 and 2020-01 required additional changes. And rulemaking by the Department of Environmental Quality on the oil processing by signation rules, IDAPA 58.01.13, required parallel changes to the proposed rule for IDAPA 200302. Testimony on it on IDAPA 200302, rules governing mine line reclamation, will be taken first. Following that, the department will take testimony on all other fee rules in the order listed on page 986 of the Administrative Bulletin. The format of this hearing is prescribed by rule. This prescribed hearing format does not include an opportunity for multi-party dialogue. The hearing is your opportunity to provide public testimony regarding the proposed rules. If you have questions or would like to discuss a rule or some other aspect related to the rules, please contact me directly afterwards and we'll give you the contact information for the program manager or bureau chief best suited to answer your question. Testimony that strays too far from the rules may be gently guided back to the proposed rules. This is a public forum, and I ask all of you to listen respectfully to all speakers and to speak respectfully to all listeners. These proposed rules were published in the September 16, 2020 Idaho Administrative Bulletin, Volume 20-9SE. The rules in the bulletin are the official versions and all comments should be based on that version. Our rulemaking website is now updated and provides a web link to the bulletin and offers an overview of the rulemaking. Both written and oral comments are very important at this stage of the rulemaking. Changes to the proposed rule can only be made based on written or oral comments received on or before October 7, 2020. IDL will review these comments and evaluate whether or not additional rule changes are needed. We will then prepare the rules for review by the Idaho State Board of Land Commissioners at their October meeting, by the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission and Idaho Board of Scaling Practices at their November meeting. Based on their recommendations, we will then submit pending rules for consideration by the 2021 legislature. Please make sure that IDL receives your comments before October 7. If you brought written comments today, please make sure to give us a copy. As a suggestion to help move things along and give everyone who wishes an opportunity to speak, those who plan to submit typed written comments could best use their oral testimony to briefly summarize the written comments or to elaborate on specific points. Since the written and oral comments are given in the same, are given the same consideration, simply reading your submitted written comments verbatim does not give them more weight. Regardless of whether or not you have written comments to submit, please do not hesitate to testify. This is your opportunity to give us feedback on the rules. Please make sure you have signed in at the back of the room and have checked the boxes for either written testimony, oral testimony, or both. Everyone who wants to speak gets one turn at the microphone per set of rules. There will be no rebuttals. While there's no time limit on testimony, please keep in mind that other people may have signed up to testify and we will adjourn by 10:30 AM. And with that, could I get the sign-in sheet? So again, we will start with IDAPA 200302, rules governing mine line reclamation, and we will start with those who are here in person, and then we will move to our Zoom participants, and then if there's any phone-only participants, they will follow. We don't have anyone signed up in person for oral testimony. So up we, okay. Alright, I will, yeah, up here on, on the podium. So first we have Ben Davenport with the Idaho Mining Association. Again, this is IDAPA 200302.
Thanks Eric, Ben Davenport with the Idaho Mining Association. I will be brief today as we are preparing written comments on the document, on the docket. But I, I wanted to stand up and make sure everyone knew how appreciative we were of the department in the process. Over the last 18 months and 10 drafts of this rule, we've seen, I don't know, over 100 comments and had plenty of rulemaking. So I thought the process went well, stakeholders were engaged, and I want to express my, my gratitude to the department for, for taking our, our comments into consideration as well as the other stakeholders. I do think we have a rule that is close and something that will be workable for both the industry and for the department in the future going forward. It is, I think it was imperative for the state of Idaho to update their financial assurance regulation. And I, I think we achieved much of our goals throughout this process as well as throughout the crafting of the statute and the House Bill 141. So I am hopeful that, that we can continue to go forward and that, that the industry will, will certainly see this as a benefit and that the state of Idaho and the taxpayers will also see the benefit in the updating of these rules. So that's all I have today, but we will provide some written comments in regards to a few small changes that I think we would like to see in, in the docket. But I don't think they're major, and, and I think we're, we're real close here. So appreciate the time over the last couple of years and appreciate the time.
Okay, that does it for our in-person testimony. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to provide testimony on 200302?
A lot of monitoring that Eric, stand by.
Okay, thanks Mick.
So far, no one has sent me a message saying they would like to provide comment. Majority of people on Zoom are from affiliate agencies. We do have a few stakeholders here as well. Specifically, I see, see Lori Lust with Simplot, Lusty and Alan Gilda. Neither one of them have sent me a text. Wait, standby. Alan Gilda is indicating he'll offer a comment by phone. He did dial in to the Zoom number, so let's see if we can bring him on. Go ahead Alan.
This is Alan.
Go ahead Alan.
Yes, thank you for allowing us to try to participate in these rulemakings. Well, the rules do look like they'll work for the larger mining companies. There still seems to be discrimination against the small miner, the hard rock bucket miner. And I'll continue to stand up and argue on that and the things that there should be, there's something that the rules are, provide up, provide appropriate, size-appropriate regulations or requirements versus taking a small person that wants to disturb a few square, a few hundred square feet or an acre or so and making them go through the same thing. Somebody that's 50 or 100 or 1,000 acres goes through. So that's, that's my, my concern still that that, the small guy hasn't been addressed. And as a result, because of the cost, all the way around from the application fees to the required information in these rules, that the small guy basically is shoved out the door in Idaho. And I've provided a couple of examples throughout the time, and I'll go ahead and submit those in writing on places where wording can be, be provided. I know in the formal summary, you said that small operations, such as the bucket miner ones for hard rock, does not require reclamation plans for operations. But the rules don't seem to reflect that same, same viewpoint where they say all mining operations, exploration, et cetera. So if there is such thing as it doesn't require for such small operations as like my bucket mining operations or projects, then maybe there's someplace we can put it in, either under exploration or under the do not apply or somewhere in that area. So I'll be, like I say, I'll be supplying more information on that in the written testimonies. But that's where I'm coming from still.
Mr. Gilda, thank you for that comment. I do have a clarifying question for you, and I know we're not in negotiated rulemaking currently. I just want to make sure I understand that your comments are going to revolve around us providing clarity as to who these changes apply to and who they don't, or what operations they apply to and what they don't apply to?
Yeah, 'cause in the, the September 16th public summary of the negotiated rulemaking, you say that IDL has not required a reclamation plan or operation as described in the comment. But the rules themselves say that all must. And so that, that seems like a counterdiction in, in directive for a small operator. So that's, I'm trying to get some, yeah, some clarity in that in, you know, or if we have to go through the permitting thing, that's not a problem if it is size-appropriate and reasonable fees for a small, small-scale operation. That's more like a weekend hobby project.
Alright, thank you Mr. Gilda, I appreciate that clarification.
You're welcome, thank you.
Next is Patty McGrath with the United States Environmental Protection Association, Region 10. She's going to make a brief comment. So Patty, it's to you.
Okay, I hope you all can hear me.
We've got you, thank you.
Great, I just want to make a, a brief comment to, I think similar to Ben's comment, express appreciation for the work that Idaho Department of Lands has done on the rule and the negotiated rulemaking process and allowing us to provide comments and input into the process. And we have seen changes to the rule based on our comments and, and other stakeholders' comments, so that's highly appreciated. I'm not sure if EPA will be sending written comments on, on the draft rule. We're still looking at it and making that determination. But I did want to just take the time to express my thanks to Idaho Department of Land and, and thanks from EPA management as well, who have been involved in helping review the rule and participate in the process.
Thank you Patty, do you have any more comments?
Not at this time.
Alright, thank you very much. I don't have anyone else who has asked to comment via Zoom. I'll give one last call. Alright, no more comments via Zoom, Eric?
Okay, is there anyone just on phone who wants to provide oral testimony? Going once? Twice? Okay, great. So that wraps up the 200302 portion. And with that, we'll move on to the next rule. 200214, rules for selling forest products on state-owned endowment lands, starting on page 989 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide comment on those rules? Okay, not hearing anyone. The next rule is 200301, rules governing dredge and plaster mining operations in Idaho, starting on page 992 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide comments on those rules?
And folks, when Eric says that, he also includes his Zoom participants if, if there's any confusion.
Okay, next. 200303, rules governing administration of the reclamation fund, starting on page 1051 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide comment on these rules? Okay. The next is IDAPA 200304, rules for the regulation of beds, waters and airspace for navigable lakes in the state of Idaho, starting on page 1055 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide comment on this rule?
Eric, you're doing a phenomenal job.
Okay, great, I'm, I'm killing them up here. Next is IDAPA 200305, riverbed mineral leasing in Idaho, starting on page 1074 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide comment on this rule? Okay, next is IDAPA 200308, easements on state-owned lands, starting on page 1079 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide testimony on this rule? Okay, we'll take that as a no. Next is IDAPA 200309, easements on state-owned submerged lands and formerly submerged lands, starting on page 1084 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide testimony on this rule? I'll take that as a no. Next is IDAPA 200313, administration of cottage site leases on state lands, starting on page 1090 of the bulletin. Does anybody wish to provide comment on this rule?
Eric, it looks like we do have a comment coming.
Okay. Go ahead.
Alan, you, you, are you gonna make some comment on that or not? Gilda?
No, I didn't have any comments on these. I think somebody else commented, but it looks like they must be muted or something.
Alright. That's fine, we're just trying to manage it here, so thank you. And, and your number popped up, but I just wanted to proactive. But it doesn't look like we have any comments on this Eric, thank you.
Okay, cottage site rules are a no then, for comments? Because IDAPA 200314, rules governing grazing, farming, conservation, non-commercial recreation and communication site leases, starting on page 1091 of the bulletin. Any comments on these rules? Okay, we'll take that as a no. Next is IDAPA 200315, rules governing geothermal leasing on Idaho state lands, starting on page 1101 of the bulletin. Any comment on these rules? Okay, we'll take that as a no. Next is IDAPA 200316, rules governing oil and gas leasing on state lands, starting on page 1114 of the bulletin. Any comment on these rules? Okay, we'll take that as a no. Next is IDAPA 200317, rules governing leases on state-owned submerged lands and formerly submerged lands, starting on page 1127 of the bulletin. Any comments on these rules? Okay, take that as a no. Okay, we're in the home stretch folks. Next is IDAPA 200402.
Standby Eric, we had someone hop in.
Oh, okay.
Was, was there a comment? Go ahead.
I, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit out of place. I had difficulty, it said to type star six and to be able to speak. This is Wendy Miller, and I wasn't able to speak back in the beginning. So then I hung up and recalled and now I'm able to get through. So I'm a little out of place, can I make a comment here?
Wendy, thank you, Ms. Miller, thank you. And just for the record, I believe you're wanting to talk about 200302?
That is correct, mhm.
Alright, please, please go ahead.
Yes, first of all, I'm grateful for meetings and comments to include to the, that you've included them to the public. And I'm also grateful for you answering questions. And I have a question for IDL, if that's alright. I have mining claims on the federal land and with respect to mining on it, after I get these permits and I have my bonds from the feds, what does IDO require before I can start mining on it?
So Ms. Miller, we can talk about that offline after the hearing. This is not a question and answer session. You missed the intro. This rule format is, or the hearing format is prescribed by rule. We are only accepting comment, this is not a discussion forum. But we can certainly have that discussion with you afterwards.
Okay.
Ms. Miller, I've, I've got your phone. I'll coordinate with Eric this afternoon if at all possible to get back on the phone with you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay Eric, back on, back online.
Okay. We are on IDAPA 2004.02, Rules Pertaining to the Idaho Forestry Act and Fire Hazard Reduction Laws, starting on page 1135 of the bulletin. Are there any comments on these rules? Okay, we'll take that as a no. Next is IDAPA 2006.01, Rules of the Idaho Board of Scaling Practices, starting on page 1145 of the bulletin. Are there any comments on these rules? Okay, take that as a no. And last one, IDAPA 2007.02, Rules Governing Conservation of Oil and Natural Gas in the State of Idaho, starting on page 1155 of the bulletin. Are there any comments on these rules? Okay, we'll take that as a no. And then before ending, one last chance. Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to provide comments but didn't indicate so? And this is your turn to comment on a rule that you have not previously commented on. Anyone? Hey Mick, anyone on the Zoom or phone?
No, no one, no one came through. I think the, the two people that I was aware of was Patty, Alan and Wendy. And they all provided comment. And obviously Mr. Danfordport is there in person. So we appreciate that.
Great, thank you. So that closes the hearing for today. It is now 9:33. Thank you for participating in the rulemaking process.
Thanks folks. Chris, you can stop recording now and we'll go ahead and end the session.